Note two, Ms. Johnson, if you could do roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Ms. Coles. Ms. Rainey.
Present.
Ms. Shulist.
Present.
Ms. Senyard.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you'll join me for opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to connect matters of business. We got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Rainey Anderson, any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Coles. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Citizens' comments?
There are none tonight.
Ma'am. Approval of the amendments from the March ninth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting?
I'm sorry, you said the March meeting? I am looking at notes from February's meeting. I haven't seen minutes from March. Have minutes from March been sent out?
They should have been unless it was the wrong one that got attached.
I saw them.
I thought I saw them, but I think they're like attached to the whole thing.
The whole packet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'd like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ula Senyard? Any more discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard. Ms. Coles. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Calley. Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Butler.
Aye. We'll go to new business, item one, PC resolution, PC seventeen twenty-one. A resolution to amend the City of Fairview subdivision regulations. Item A, we will open a public hearing for this item. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this public hearing? If not, we will close this public hearing. Will I go to item B? Which is a resolution to amend the City of Fairview subdivision regulations, Article five, Section five, one oh two, concept plan preparation. And if anyone from staff just wants to give us a brief synopsis?
A couple of years ago, section two of the subdivision regulations was brought forth and it changed basically the same wording. And then we realized this was also, again, in section five. Uh, as we came back a couple of years ago and said that these documents would be changing, we'd have to be going through and finding things. Every time we open up a little bit, we see more. And this is just one of those things that we saw that we had addressed at one point, but needed to be cleared up again. Uh, so this will be, uh, just clearing up section five, subsection one oh two.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Qualls, Jenkins? Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Calley. Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Butler.
Aye. Item two, new business, PC resolution, PC eighteen dash twenty-one. A resolution to amend the City of Fairview subdivision regulations. Item A, a public hearing for this resolution, we'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on resolution eighteen twenty-one, public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing. Item B, or item two B, a resolution to amend the City of Fairview subdivision regulations, Article five, Section five, one oh three, development plan preparation. Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, similarly to the other, this is about the development plan specifically. Uh, the wording was again changed in section, or in Article two. Uh, this is Article five, need to change the same. And the way that we have changed this, where it went into a little more detail in Article five. Basically, it allows anyone who has a license or a stamp by the state of Tennessee to submit their set of plans and doesn't allow anyone to submit something that they would not be able to, but allows, uh, everyone to put all of that together into one submittal and then sign off on each of theirs.
Sir?
Make a motion to approve PC eighteen dash twenty-one?
I'll second.
Calley, Coles. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Coles.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Butler.
Aye. Item three, PC resolution, PC nineteen twenty-one. A resolution to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance residential zoning classifications. I don't know if we want to give a brief synopsis, we've been talking about these, uh, breakdowns in, in our work sessions and such. Mr. Collins, if you just want to give us a quick overview?
Yes, sir. So, um, Mr. Butler, members of the, of the commission, as you're aware, for some time, we've been working on, um, some zoning classification changes so we can implement the new or proposed, um, land use map that we've been working on for some time. As a part of that, we have some weaknesses in some of our zoning areas that we know we need to, um, shore up. So, um, the zoning ordinances and the land use map as a part of the comprehensive plan are all adopted by the Board of Commissioners. That said, um, we've done some work in this room at this level and recognize some weaknesses that need to be addressed before we go forward with the land use map so that it can be, so these zones, um, can make a little more sense for what we're trying to accomplish. So with that minimally, um, what this is, is a resolution from the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners to include at least the following, uh, when we make the final changes to the residential zoning ordinances. Um, item A is to amend the RS forty zoning classification by removing mobile home compliance. Um, currently, mobile homes are allowed in RS forty. We would simply either remove that in its entirety or maintain the, um, the mobile home subdivision as a part of the zoning. Item B, amend R twenty zoning classification to, by removing duplex compliance. You may recall that there's a question about in an R twenty zone, currently, a duplex meets an R twenty zone. So what we're asking is that that be removed minimally and that we would add, as we've previously discussed, an RD zoning classification or residential duplex. So we would know, understand what, um, classification was being sought. Item C, further identify defined terms, green space and open space. Obviously, that's a broader discussion, but we're going to need to make sure on all of our zoning classifications, we understand what those are and can apply those restrictions. Item D, identify what determines density, a number of lots or lot sizes. Again, that may be a broader discussion based on individual zoning classifications, but we'll need to identify what, um, the, what determines density generally. Item E, eliminate the use of planned overlay districts and single zone residential developments and subdivisions. The purpose of that is to no longer allow a pod, or what's formerly known as a PUD, um, so that a smaller lot can be, um, placed on, on an individual parcel. That's typically been used when the need for on-site sewer was, was applied. What this does, or the request would be, um, that the use of a pod would simply go away and you request the zoning for a site that would be, um, in compliance or would agree with your minimum lot sizes for the subdivision. Again, that will go back to the density classification, but what we're trying to do is make sure a zoning for a single residential zoning meets the lot size and not a pod overlay specific to that for, um, open space or other land use. Item F, refine the setbacks for all zones, that will be side front, um, and back setbacks. As we've seen through some of our views, some of those are a little bit narrow, particularly as it relates to, um, multifamily. So we want to make sure that we clarify what those are on the, on all zones, but specifically multifamily. And then refine multifamily zones to better utilize lots per late, lots per acre classifications. Um, you may recall that in some of our multifamily, we actually had the same open space for more dense, um, classifications for multifamily from an R twelve to an R twenty, as an example. So what we're trying to do is make sure that the lots per acre calculations would include, um, any larger necessity for parking spaces, open space, that sort of thing. So we can actually facilitate not just the number of units per acre, but what it takes to support that number of units per acre. So tho- those are the minimum requests that we would have to go to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve PC nineteen dash twenty-one?
Second.
Calley, Rainey, any questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley. Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Coles. Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms- Mr. Butler.
Aye. PC resolution. Item four, PC resolution, PC twenty dash twenty-one. A resolution to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance, commercial zoning classifications. Ms. Collins?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Butler, members of the commission, um, you may recall that we've had discussion in this room and at the BOC level. The, um, the difficulty that we run into with the much broader CG or commercial, commercial general classification. What typically happens in a commercial general, um, zoning request is the question comes up of what is the proposed use of that commercial zoning? And the commercial zoning is very broad, as we have today. So what often happens is we start having a discussion about whether or not any of the proposed uses in commercial general would be preferred for that site. An example, someone comes in and states they want to put a restaurant on a site. Well, if that were to fail, for whatever reason, any other commercial general use would apply if that property is owned commercial general. So the, the well-intended and stated use could be a restaurant and a year from then, it could be a gas station, a towing facility, some other thing. So the purpose of this is to go back and further categorize our commercial zoning so that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners and the public can be relatively assured that when they apply for one of these more detailed zoning classifications, that if that plan fails, the stated plan fails, then i- if it's even stated, then you can be assured that a like or similarly like business is going to be installed on that location. That's the purpose of the classifications, going from commercial general to C one, C two, C three, C four, and C five, as they've been previously outlined and there are here. There may be some changes once we get to the BOC level. However, the purpose is to, um, provide some assurance that we have uniformity in our zoning and that we have, um, some guarantee of what uses will be in that area should the zoning classification be approved.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve PC twenty dash twenty-one?
I'll second.
Calley, Senyard? Any discussion or questions? Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Coles. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you. We will go to note, item five, PC resolution, PC twenty-one dash twenty-one. A resolution to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance, other zoning classifications. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Butler, members of the commission, um, what we're, what we're talking about here, in addition to our commercial zoning, is that there are certain businesses that may be considered, um, short-term or certainly not a part of a, um, individual zoning where you would want to have them just be in various spots. You're going to want to regulate them in some way. They can be regulated by number, they can be regulated by distance, they can be regulated by o- other factors. But what you're trying to do is ensure that you don't have clusters of these type business or that these type businesses don't infringe in their appearance or activity on other, other businesses. So what their quest is, um, from the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners, to consider individual zoning, um, or individual, um, requirements regarding the zoning or use of certain groups of businesses. And those are, those groups are, um, group A, check cashing and check and, check cashing and cash advance businesses. Um, those do, those do crop up from time to time, but, um, those need to be regulated somewhat as to their location generally. Um, item number two, or B, similarly are tobacco shops that are solely tobacco shops as their primary, um, um, product that they sell. Item C are group homes. Um, and group homes typically are going to go into some sort of residential setting, but you want to make sure that they are compliant with certain, um, guidelines for your residential settings and the use of those facilities. That could be as simple as if you're going to have a group home, uh, do you have a commercial kitchen? Do you have it sprinkled? Do you have a certain distances parking locations, that sort of thing? Um, that you're going to need to make sure you can manage within that group. Item D are food truck and similar transient retail and commercial enterprises. Again, we'll focus on the food truck. What we've seen, uh, with the growth of food trucks here in Fairview is they kind of crop up in certain locations which we're, we welcome. However, the random location of those can cause issues as far as traffic concern, site visibility, site distance, certain speed zones that they may apply, um, that they may be in. So you need to, we may, need to make sure that we address that. Uh, within that, they'll need to be addressed in such a way that they have adequate parking, that we can identify a commissary, and that we can identify restroom facilities or available restroom facilities, um, should they be there for extended periods of time. Um, item E, fireworks sale districts or zoning regulations. Again, we've had the fireworks ordinance discussed for some time. Rather than have a fireworks sale ordinance, um, that the city has discussed, um, a couple of times over the last couple of years, it makes it a little easier if you, you just kind of skip the fireworks sale ordinance and identify certain zones where fireworks can be sold and identify the areas where they can be. Again, a distance, um, qualifier is an easy one so that you can be, you know, they can be in a like zoned business and that they're sporadic throughout your community is the purpose of that. And then lastly, F, retail and commercial industrial and manufacturing locations. These would be similar to a discussion we had previously, to where you have a restaurant that may also want to have a brewery. Or you may have what starts out as a, as a manufacturing or industrial facility and they decide later that they want to open up a retail site on that space. They may manufacture a product that's not sold retail, but based on that manufacturing or demand for that, they may want to transition into the retail s- location. We don't want to cut off their manufacturing ability, but we don't want to have retail, uh, in those sites as well. So this would outline the need for that and where they would go, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve PC twenty-one dash twenty-one?
Second.
Calley, Shulist? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Coles. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Item six, PC resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one. Site plan, Otter Creek subdivision, phase two, twenty-six building lots on twenty-eight point nine acres. Map forty-two, parcel seventy-eight point oh one and seventy-nine. Property owners, Otter Creek Holdings LLC. Discussion or questions? Anyone like to make a motion? Do you need to make a motion for denial or approval or would motion, like a, like a motion fail?
No, sir. The staff's preference is that, that this be approved. Um, the, we're, we're requesting the approval of the site. The, the phase two, as it exists, um, does meet every requirement as it, as in our subdivision regulations. And, um, Will Owen has been the engineer of record for the city on this and, and he's asserted that as well. So, uh, we recommend approval of the, of this. One thing that we would request is that a, a condition of the approval is that any permits, um, or permitting required for phase one that currently exist, um, be, um, required to be obtained as a contin- as a, as a contingency for this approval. That's all we have for you.
Sir?
I'll make a motion to approve PC resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one. Um, for phase two, conditioned upon, um, the owners getting, applying and getting up the necessary permits for the previous, uh, phase as a condition for approval.
Second.
Second.
We have Qualls, Jenkins. Uh, McDonald, sorry. And so just while ma- in the resolution, there's just some notes I'll read in to make sure, because in the approval, it includes the notes from the resolution. The plan set is shown provides driveway access to certain proposal lots by the way a WADC access drive to the step system treatment and disposal area. This approach shall be reviewed and approval may be granted by WADC. And A-RAP coverage may be required for the driveway crossings that will likely be necessary to cross the stream. If access approval is granted by WADC and used as a primary access to the building lot, the following notes shall be added to the final plat. Lots accessible by WADC easement will not be accessible by public right of way. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting and provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to construction meeting.
Question, Richard Howes with SCC.
Thank you, sir.
These are my plans, um, what permits are we talking about here? I'm a little confused. I believe in. I'm sorry, go, you can answer questions.
So the permit is for phase two. There's, there's not been a pre-construction meeting.
Correct.
For phase two. And I understand that can't happen until this approval takes place. So then, the only issue would be, the only thing would be to ensure that the pre-construction meeting be, take place, that the developers', um, agreement be fulfilled and a bond be set and a grading permit be issued by the city.
Right. They just said phase one. I just wanted to make sure.
It's phase two.
Thank you. I thought there was something on phase one, though. Where they were, uh. I think the discussion was some, in this, um, I think the confusion there is, and this is on my part, is the work that was done in phase two to facilitate some of the work done in phase one previously, if I remember, if I'm that, remember that correctly. So we're just trying to ensure that all permits for that site and all phases be in place.
That site, you're referencing phase two, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any reference or anything in phase one?
No, sir.
Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Well, I, I guess I do have a question. Then shouldn't the motion be adjusted then to not include phase one? The motion explicitly stated phase one.
You just amend the motion to reference phase two.
Can we restate the motion completely? Okay. I'll restate that, uh, the motion, uh, be approved for PC twenty-two dash twenty-one. Uh, conditioned upon permits being, um, for the owner to apply for all the necessary permits.
For phase two.
For phase two. And that includes work already done without permit? Okay.
There's a second still down there, Mr. McDonald?
Second, yes.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussions or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Coles.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Calley. Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Item seven, PC resolution, PC twenty-three dash twenty-one. Site plan, Halls Automotive, single building, commercial building lot on two point zero eight acres. Map forty-seven, parcel two point oh three, property owners, Henrietta Hall.
Commissioner Butler, I would like to add one thing on this is, uh, a question was asked earlier about the elevations. They were not presented on this plan set and that's my, my fault for not having that. I have seen those and they do meet the designer review manual for, for that facade.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shulist, there's a few, uh, staff comments, if I can get you to read them for me.
Revised plan set to show site signage and lighting photometrics. Add site circulation sheet to plan set. Address Fairview Fire Department comments regarding hydrant connections, automated sprinkler requirements and fire marshal designation. Address engineering comments regarding stormwater structures and EPSC. Plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir, if you could, state your name for me.
Uh, Connor Gilbert with TTL.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, just wanted to go ahead and get up here and address a couple of those. Um, we have a comment, uh, regarding the curb in the back towards the dumpster pad. Um, from my understanding is the council members are recommending to go ahead and get, get, do rid of the, uh, the curb there and pave out to the, uh, the adjacent property owner's property. Um, we're currently in talks, uh, to try to figure out how we're going to do that with Tractor Supply Company, but just wanted to kind of put that out there so y'all will be aware with the next revised set.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions or discussion or anyone like to make a motion?
Is there?
Second.
We have Calley, Rainey. Ms. McDonald, do you have a question? Are you making a motion?
You know, I, I had a question. Um, in regards to the, is it the detention pond up the front there? Is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Is there, um, I mean, is that going to be standing water? Is there going to be a, is there anything around it? Or I mean, because it's just if, I guess in the future, if sidewalks and that becomes more of a walkable area, you have an open body of water with no protection around it, it just seem, I'm just curious.
So, that is an existing detention pond that is servicing primarily the Tractor Supply parking lot. Uh, currently, we have plans and calculations that support it, um, to keep the low-flow orifice to prevent any standing water from standing. Um, and revising with a weir plate to prevent excess flows. The flows, all flows will continue to be reduced. Uh, the final elevation of pond of water for a hundred-year design storm will go up, but, uh, flows will still be reduced across the board.
So it's not going to be a situation where there should be water standing, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sir, any additional questions? Yes, ma'am?
Staff was okay with this going forward, even with the small comments? Okay.
The ongoing maintenance of that, uh, retention pond, it is with, uh, halls?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. There was an original across drainage agreement that was between Tractor Supply and the original owner of our property. And so it is on our property. Uh, all construction will be within our disturbed area, so.
Okay, so, uh, after it's completed, since it's on your property, even though Tractor Supply's parking area is draining to it, Hall will be responsible for maintaining it, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff, is there any requirements for an existing, um, detention, retention pond such as this for, um, making it look better? Site improvements? Code-wise?
Currently, no. Um, we do have a draft coming to you guys that would require the dress-up of that. We would also require fencing, which we don't currently require. Um, so there is some information coming to you to make those adjustments, but that wouldn't apply to this specific site.
Got it. Okay.
Ms. Hall, if you could, if you could just come, yes, ma'am?
It's right on the highway. Half of it will be gone when the state comes through and buys my land. They're going to have to build it in the ground in a tank. It will go away as far as Hall is concerned, which is fine with me. That other retention pond filters our water that goes into there, just so you know.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Give us a little bit, the state might fix it.
Any additional discussions or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley. Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Coles. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Item eight, discussion, City of Fairview Park buffer. I don't know if any, if the, uh, staff has anything prepared or present, presentation. This is something we talked about in the board. We talked about having come the discussion through Planning Commission to give some feedback to the board as they discuss the exterior perimeter buffer around the park in the future.
So are we just waiting for someone to start a discussion about buffers?
Start us off.
Okay, cool. What precedent do we currently have as a city for other buffers? Do we not have any? Would this be the first of its kind where we come up with a buffer around a specific property or a specific property type?
There's several different buffer requirements based off of zoning that backs up to other zoning, commercial, residential, pod to a larger space, things like that. There's a conservation subdivision that speaks to a public park buffer. So there's, there's random buffers all around, around retention ponds and things like that, so.
Okay.
But nothing specific to a, a Buoy Nature Park or city-owned park buffer.
What sorts of details are we trying to iron out? Are we looking at like the depth of the buffer, where it, what it goes around? Like what kind of details are we trying to iron out here?
I think that is our goal to, and Ms. Collins yell at me if I, if I say something wrong, but the, essentially the 2040 comprehensive plan has, has a note that a buffer around the park should be established. And so we're trying to establish and decide what we think is going to be best for that or any parks in general.
My question, if you establish a buffer around the park, number one, you've got to grandfather and some pieces that are right next to the park that exist and there's no footage for a separation zone. And then the next thing when you're determining the buffer is who, you've got to also determine whether it's the future landowner to, to install it, maintain it. So the existing properties that may be agricultural, do they stay exempt until they're developed into something other than what they are? So you end up with a buffer zone in one spot and like sidewalks to nowhere. You don't have a buffer zone next door because it's a hay farm or something like that. So you've got, in my opinion, you really got a Pandora's box. You got to open up and put together. And so I, I see buffer is a confusing word until we say there's 10 different buffers and here they are, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and then discuss and tear it apart or combine those 10 different types of buffers. And so my thought personally is we ought to have somebody sit down at a table, four or five people or whatever, and design six or seven different options of buffers and then come back to us as soon as possible and try to put those pieces together. I don't see how you can just sit here tonight and just, that's like saying, I got a watch. What kind of watch is it? I know it tells time, but there's a million different watches and I think that's where we're at.
I think, I think we would, I agree. I think we would almost have to know, we would almost have to see a map of everything that surrounds Buoy that's buildable or developable. That we would have to see what that looks like before we could say there's a universal buffer. I don't think we can do a universal buffer.
Power lines. Staff got anything good for?
The only, the only thing I would suggest is your, it's going to be a bit complicated. Obviously, there are different uses around. I, I think what really prompted the conversation as we're having today is the proposed neighborhood over at Buoy Park of the growth property, I think it is, is now. We do get into a little bit of a dilemma in that if we were to attempt as a city to go in and adopt an ordinance for a park buffer at this point to try and force one on that subdivision, I think with that subdivision specifically, we, we're going to hit a snag legally. I don't, Mr. Potter can answer that, but I think we're suffering in the process now. I don't think we could go back and do that. Now, with that, the developer of that subdivision specifically has mentioned that on their existing buffer, which I think is 35 feet, 25 feet and 10 feet, if I remember correctly, and the 25-foot buffer they've talked about was being pretty heavily landscaped and done around that. So I think you could, in reasonable terms, if you wanted to discuss a buffer, would be to take, I apologize, would be to take that information, if we use that as kind of a guide and go back and say, maybe we're not looking so much for a buffer as it relates to a certain amount of feet or a certain amount of density or length, but we could do that as a certain amount of whatever visual requirements we would, we would require to, to have that included on those properties where they ever to develop. So you could go back and say, for example, if that subdivision's 25 feet and we know they're going to have certain plantings and those things to protect that view and that thing, then I think you could go back and adopt that as your future like use so that you would be able to have that as an area. So you could at least mandate as a buffer, we're talking about maybe not so much property, but visibility from what they will be required to install in there to protect that visibility on both sides. I think that'd be more reasonable discussion to do. Also, the, the geography of the lots around the park are such now that some of them have buildable property right up against the property line at the park and some of them do not. So with that, there may already be a natural buffer that we would need to include. So I think we could accomplish the goal if we abandoned the feet discussion and were to include a, a true screening of what would be a buffer instead. I think that would accomplish the same goal, but we could then apply that uniformly around the park rather than trying to figure out parcel by parcel, lot by lot, what would be a foot or an equitable distance into that lot for a, for a buffer. So if that was going, if that was the discussion, I would do it more of a landscape requirement buffer for what to be installed or maintained rather than what would be done by a, a distance into that, into that parcel.
We could require some sort of screening that totally, if we wanted to, that we could require better, more dense screening between the subdivision and the park.
And how do you quantify that?
Again, I think you, I think the best case scenario we have right now is to go back and consider what the zoning or the screening and the landscape buffer this proposed at the grows property. They've put together a pretty robust screening in growth and, and a landscape model for there. So I think if that property was considered to go forward, I think you could use that as a model to go around the park. Obviously, there are some areas of that that are lost. We have some commercial development that's right up against the park. There's no buffer at all, right? So worst case, it can't be worse than what's there in those spots. So I think if we go back and our goal is to protect the perimeter as is, I think that if we're going to use a guide, that's not a bad one to start, to take that, see what they're going to do and then go back and apply that so that any property that came along after that to be developed, then that could be your, your marker or your threshold for there. That's, that would be my suggestion is, I'm a big fan of plagiarism. So if, if we have, I say that in a true legal sense. Yeah, ha ha. But I, I think if that's where we are and that's something that's approved, then we already have the plan, so to speak, for what that is. And I think we would just employ that as a requirement for those parcels. You may want to also do it by a number of acres developed or some other thing or linear feet that border the park. If, if you have a lot that only has 25 feet of frontage on the park, well, then that wouldn't necessarily make sense to do that if someone sells or rebuilds a single family home on there. But if you get a certain distance, 100 feet, 200 feet, whatever the number is, then you could go back and require that those growths or plantings or other things be put in place there to protect that. That wouldn't be a taking of land, so to speak.
And we are, I guess, settled in on a visual buffer versus like, I know there's been a lot of conversations about water runoff buffers and those really actually counter each other because you don't want to be planting in something that's a water runoff buffer. You want to leave it as is to the soil stable.
Yeah, that's right. You have a couple of things considered on, on one, you have the runoff question and the question is, well, what about this runoff that goes on the property? The other problem you have is in some instances, the park property itself is dependent upon that runoff. So you need to be very careful of how you manage that and mitigate that. I think the biggest concern for the most part is obviously the engineering requires that you can't put more water and you can't put it in an unlike way. So I think with that, you, you need to consider the health of what exists in the park now also as a part of that. I don't think anyone could develop it in a way that would be harmful to the park because the engineering, the requirements just simply prohibit that. I think it could be done in such a way so you protect what, what goes on to the park now because those streams, those lakes, other water sources in the park depend on those and certainly some of the, the growth and the species plants do as well, so.
So to be clear, the discussion then is we're not talking about environmental conversation, gosh, conservation here. That's, that's not the question for the buffer. The point of the buffer is not for environmental conservation, correct? Like we're not trying to protect the park environmentally. That's not the point of the buffer.
I'm not saying you are not. The question that I was asked was what would we do buffer wise? And my answer was that we would, I think we have a good template if that subdivision were to pass it. That's an easy one that would apply all around the park. Again, the conservation and all the other things, that's, I think that's a broader discussion more so than a buffer.
Yeah. It's, I feel like we're at a point right now where we're trying to come up with an answer to a question that hasn't been asked. You know, we're, we're trying to come up with a solution to a problem that hasn't been clearly identified. What is the point of the buffer? I don't just want to create a buffer for the sake of creating a buffer because some people like the term buffer around their park. I want to know what the point of the buffer is for and then build the best possible buffer for that solution that, for that problem that we're trying to solve.
I don't want to speak for the whole community. Because I can't and I don't want to speak for all the board members because they, they've all expressed their certain things. But I think the overall, as has been expressed to me in my interpretation of this, is when we talk about protection of the park, I think what's primarily been the discussion is protect what are the visual aspects around the, the border of the park on the inside of the park. I think part of the discussion has been, do we want to walk through the perimeter trail and see a row of homes? That's one, that's one type of buffer, right? Are we protecting against that? An environmental buffer or other thing, I think the environmental buffer is done through whatever the regulations are that currently exist to prevent water flow, one or the other. So I've, I've heard noise, I've heard light, I've heard all of those things that a growth or a growth plant or plantings plan would, would repair certainly over time. Obviously, these things mature. What takes place at the grows property, if in fact that subdivision goes forward, that may be a 10-year maturity, right? It's not going to be a fully, a full 25-foot forest.
Exactly.
Around there. So I think we need to be careful with what we request, the type of plantings, the type of trees, other things, manage the runoff, all of the things that come with that, the maintenance of those trees. If it's not a robust tree and it ultimately falls over and hits two other trees in the park, what's the purpose of that, right? So I, I think we're not talking about a footage into, I think we're talking about a visual from inside the park and a noise and lighted protection inside the park. If I were to ballpark it, I think the environmentals solve themselves. Again, that's, this is y'all's discussion. That's just my interpretation of what I've heard over the last four months of, of having the discussions broadly.
I've heard of a ton of complaints. You know, I've heard people give all sorts of reasons and I haven't heard anything yet that gives me a, here is why we need a buffer, like a clear, I would love to hear an environmental consultant, someone who is an expert, someone who could say, this is exactly what you should have to protect your, your park and the wildlife and whatever. Then I can speak intelligently to like, okay, then as a board, why don't we recommend this type of a buffer? Right now, it's just us making stuff up.
Well, not, not necessarily, I mean, here's the thing. The park's 743 acres, okay?
Agreed.
So the idea that we're going to put 25 feet around this park and protect the wildlife in the park is a bit off, right? So we're going to add three acres to a 740-acre park? I don't, I don't see where that's there.
Absolutely.
So with that, again, I think the discussions have been visually, what do I see inside the park looking out? Noise wise, what do I hear inside the park looking out? And light wise, what do I see inside the park looking out? So with that, I think there's also, and this, this is probably a false narrative, but it's a narrative that exists, which is the idea that prior to some of these developments coming about, you could walk the perimeter trail and for the most part, the perimeter trail is still invisible, right? So I think part of this is not what do I see when I'm in the park looking out? I think some of this comes from people wanting to believe that they're immersed in the middle of nature when they're four foot from the property line on perimeter trail.
Correct.
Right? So I think what we're trying to do is hit a medium where the city doesn't mandate the taking of any property, but the city does mandate if you develop this thing, it must be protected in such a way to those, those attributes of the park are protected.
So it sounds like the real problem as it relates to that issue was that the perimeter trail was built too close to someone else's property line.
No, I don't, I don't think you can say that.
It's a perimeter trail.
Oh, I said it.
But, but again, I don't think.
If the issue is someone who's walking the perimeter trail doesn't want to see someone else's property, then the perimeter trail should have been built in such a way that you couldn't see someone else's property. I know, but that's irrelevant to the discussion. The property owner, in my opinion, should be able to do whatever they want to with their property.
But I'll.
And if you see what's on my property, like that's irrelevant.
Listen, we can be here till midnight. But, but the reality is the perimeter trail is not four feet from the, from the property line for the entire perimeter of the park, right? When you go to build trails and other things, building a trail is not as simple as just taking a track cone, going and clearing a space. There are certain things you have to consider for that. The drainies, the plantings, the water runoff, the type of soil, the roots, the rock structure, things that can support all of your activities. So that trail is going to be designed in such a way that whatever the area or portion of that property facilitates those trail uses is the highest and best use of that property. You have to look at a slope design. Are you a certain degree left or right, up and down a hill? Can you safely walk it with a child or some other thing? So I think the idea of the perimeter trail is simply that, it's designed to be a, an estimated perimeter trail around that. I think what's brought about the discussion, if you just want me to be totally honest, I think what brought about this discussion broadly has been an emotional response to the name, the neighborhood at Buoy Park and not a true discussion about how the perimeter trail was built whenever it was built. I think that's where we are. And not to say that the discussion is not healthy because it is, but with that, the answer to the question if we're going to do that is how does the city not overreach by attempting to take or mandate the use of private property by still requiring a buffer that would meet the needs? And I think if we go back and take just the basic proposal that we have in that development, whether the development passes or not, that's a discussion for another day. Three weeks, in fact. Three weeks and one, two days, in fact. But that said, the proposal for the, for the buffer is a relatively robust buffer that would be easily met for any large development. So you could do a like buffer around the park. So if that was, if my answer would be, that would be my suggestion. However, the board chooses to do after that, I would certainly do, but I, I think that, that equation seems to answer both questions. Yes, sir. City Hall backs up, Publix backs up, the house beside us backs up, all of Walmart backs up, Scott Fetsor or the manufacturing plant there. So all of that borders directly to Buoy Property. The physicians, the, the doctor's offices, Tractor Supply, all of that strip belong there. When you get to the, where the pharmacy is, where the new doctor's office is on this side of the road, as you go to a Walmart, the park property borders the back driveway of that. So I, I think with that, there could be some argument that those are commercial uses and obviously Highway 100 is going to develop commercially or some of the residential around the property is not going to be commercial. So I think you could go back and do those things to offer those, those protections. But again, my, my suggestion would be consider a, a plantings requirement for those that would be uniform around the apartment. That's just, that's just my suggestion.
So do we need to decide anything today or we're just having a general discussion?
I have no clue.
If you want to send a recommendation to the board, I think the board's talking about it Thursday night. I think the discussion, I think is good tonight, too. I don't think there needs to be any action taken.
And my information on that's only the feedback I've gotten from every direction. That doesn't mean it's right or wrong. That's just what I've heard from all sides and then try to hit a middle ground and that's how I came up with that, that answer.
Do we need to send a resolution to the board?
I, I wouldn't think so. It's clearly the privilege of the, of the planning commission if you choose to do so. I don't know if that'd be necessary.
Okay.
So to be clear, to establish a buffer would be a zoning regulation, which would be responsibility of the, of us or the board of commissioners?
Board of commissioners.
Board of commissioners. So our thoughts are just our thoughts, but two of you are commissioner or city commissioners. So you can take our thoughts from tonight and then present them to the rest of the board on Thursday, other than that, our opinions are irrelevant.
If the BOC were to adopt that thing, then my, my suggestion to the board of commissioners when they adopted that ordinance would also simultaneously adopt a section in the subdivision regulations that reference that code section. So the subdivision regulations would then mirror, so if I'm developer whoever and it's five years down the road and I'm, I'm assembling property and I'll look at whatever the regulations are for a and I'll look at whatever the regulations are for a park buffer, then in my subdivision regulations, there should be a reference to municipal code section 831, whatever the thing is. So they'd be able to go and do that. And if that changed, then rather than having to change the subdivision regulations and the ordinance over the course of time, if you need to amend it, you just simply amend the ordinance for whatever was appropriate 10, 20 years down the road. But the subdivision regulations reference that code section is what the requirement is. So there would be an action to come back to the, to the planning commission, if that makes sense.
Is the property line on that park easily identifiable if you're just walking out? I mean, it's not really surveyed or marked, where you could easily just say, hey, there's Bowie Park.
In, in most areas it is. Most of the properties around, around the property, they've cut the grass, they've landscaped, they've manicured up to there. So there are certain areas where you can't, you can't tell, primarily on the, that side? On the-
North side?
On the Crow Cut roadside, as you make your way around. But now, on the Crow Cut roadside, the city owns the property, and there's about a 25-foot buffer open space between Crow Cut Road and the park. So there's an area that you can clearly identify what's the city's. It makes us way around Crow Cut. When you get back, basically across from Deer Valley down subdivision, back that way, you get back into some of the other roads that, that make it a little more difficult. But for the most part, you can identify it when you, when you make the loop.
So in regards to this, we don't have anything currently in place at all officially? Or is, is there is a 25, did you say 25-foot currently?
There, there's nothing at all officially.
So we're not trying to hide land, right? This is people trying to, the whole idea is to uncover or cover up unsightly development or whatever, right? Call it whatever. But I mean, if you buy a house and you build X amount of feet off of it, I mean, are we talking if the construction's close enough, is it then you have to hide it visually? Or if it's 100 feet away and it's ugly, that doesn't matter? Or if it's 10 feet away, but it's a horse fence and it's pretty for the woods, like, that works?
You have setbacks on, on those already. So as a part of that, what you would do in, in this discussion, and let's say we're talking about a 25-foot landscape buffer owned by the property, you pick the number, whatever it is, then that would be required in the subdivision regulations, and it would just mirror that ordinance. So if I then come in and I'm, I'm looking to buy two properties and put together, it would clearly show me what plantings are required as a part of the standard customary. Those plantings would be just the same as what's required for my driveway or my sidewalk or the drip line on a house or any other thing, the setbacks and all such as that. I know we talked just a minute ago, Ms. Hulis did, about required plantings and shrubbery and all that stuff. We have come into this board, a requirement that we would, we would, for each home, we would require certain amount of shrubbery, plantings, tree, that sort of thing. So we would move those out of the street tree, out, we would move them out from the verge, I believe it's called, between the sidewalk and the road, and move it onto the property. So you'd have a landscaped property, and this would just simply be a landscape requirement on that, on those, on those properties. Not really, because if you do that, then they become a part of your, a building permit in your CO. So in that case, you go through and they don't have those things at that point. If it's a requirement and those things are done, then that would be a CO, a discussion to be had.
So about the setup between Bowie Park and the city, when they had that last big boulevard, all the Publix and everything, when part of the property was sold from Bowie? And there was some kind of agreement between the city and Bowie?
No, well, the, the city owned Bowie Park at that time and has for some time. What the discussion was, and I wasn't here, so I'll try to answer it, and I'm sure I'm going to mess it up. But what brought about that discussion was, at the time, the deed, or the deed provided for certain properties to be sold for development and other things. That's how this took place. The Publix and the other came in. With that, the question came about of, now they're clearing the park, they're cutting the trees, they're going to sell all of it forever. So nothing changed between the city's agreement and the deed, because the city owned the deed. There was no agreement between the city and the park, because the deed itself was the agreement. What the city then did was just go, basically apply a security blanket on top of the deed by partnering with the Land Trust of Tennessee, so that rather than the board of commissioners being able to go in and attempt to say what their interpretation of the deed was, any interpretation of the deed or use of the property would be governed by the Land Trust of Tennessee. So that's how that came about. There was no, there was no increasing of the property or deed or other thing, because at that time, the city still owned the property, right? So all they did was basically just add a layer of protection. Basically, it protected, I'm going to say this loosely, but I don't think all of our elected officials are here, most of them are. But what that agreement did was protect the park from future elected officials.
And the city still-
It's really, really what it, what it did. I'm not, just think that wrong. Correct. That's correct.
But the city still owns the park. You said that, like, at that point in time, the city owned the park. So let's just clear that up.
We still own, there's nothing changed. Scott Collins said, to the Tennessean, that no change of ownership of the park has or is planned to take place. It's simply a, a security blanket for the existing deed. So rather than the city going in and making their interpretation of what the deed is or making changes, if there's going to be any substantive change to the use in the park, then the land trust must be consulted, and they will be the decision maker on whether or not that change or use was appropriate.
So if I understand this right, we do have to take into consideration distance, right? Because there has to be a trigger distance that then would create the need for that visual buffer, right? Or are we just going to say, if you purchase or own land around Bowie, you have to put up a visual buffer?
I wouldn't say that you purchase it, because there would be no change to it.
But, but there still has to be a trigger point, right? Or you, you can't just say, if you build on this property that touches, it's got to be within a certain distance that would then result in needing that buffer, correct?
Yeah, so, so you need to do that a couple of ways. I say a couple, maybe 10 ways. But the first way would be, you're going to have to establish a linear, what, what linear foot distance are you talking about would constitute a redevelopment? So if I buy two or three lots, or I'm going to develop these things, I think that's the easier point. If you're going to do something 200, 300 feet, whatever the number is, you must do this thing. If you were to rebuild a home on a lot, on an existing lot, for whatever reason, or you bought a single lot, then you would, that rebuild would be subject to the requirements at the time for your setbacks. In that case, you would just simply add that buffer as a part of your landscaping for any new construction. And it would be covered in that, in that format.
And I'm presuming that if you're rebuilding on your own lot, for some reason, like your house was destroyed, you'll be grandfathered in and you will not be required to put the buffer in?
They would have to, they would have to meet the, the landscape requirements for whatever was built at the time.
Okay.
So if I'm building something new, unless Mr. Potter, and there, there may be some, some moving around that thing. But you're, let's say, for example, and I'm not proposing this either for discussion purposes only, let's say that, and we don't have right now a requirement for residential sprinkler system, okay? Doesn't exist. We don't do that. Some cities do. We don't do requirement for residential sprinkler. Let's say that a home is torn down and a home is rebuilt. And, and we pass at the next meeting a requirement that a residential sprinkler be installed in all new construction. In that case, that home wouldn't be grandfathered in not to have a residential sprinkler system. If it's rebuilt, it's going to be required to have the sprinkler system. So your landscape ordinance and everything else would be the same. If you're going to do those, you just simply incorporate those in. Now, there may be some case by case, to where someone comes in and says there's something out of their control that took place, a storm comes through, lightning strike, whatever thing happens. There may be certain provisions you put in there where that wouldn't be required. But generally, you would put those with your, with your building permit, and that will be a part of your, your inspection process.
Thinking outside the box here, wouldn't it just be easier for us to build a buffer within the borders of the park and not have to worry about other people's property having buffers on them?
We thought about that as well. But there are a couple of concerns we have with that. Obviously, the park is an ecosystem in and of itself. So, and you have a trail system that borders the park. So let's say that we were to go in and decide, the city's going to plant a 25-foot buffer on its side of the park. With that point, you're going to have to remove the, a third of the perimeter trail and relocate everything that, that goes there. You're also going to have to figure out what happens to the watershed, the plantings, the groves, the trees, everything that comes with that, and what do you put in there? So for all of the purposes there, it would make sense not to move, move those things, because then you're altering the park itself. And I don't think the intent is to alter the park. I think the intent is to offer a buffer up at the park, similar to what you would do if someone comes in and an unlike use, commercial next to residential, residential next to commercial, industrial next to those. I don't think what you're imposing with a land, with a landscaping plan is in anything greater of the imposition that you would for any other development comes through by doing that. So what you're trying to do is get the most impact with the least inconvenience that you can prevent, present to all parties. Again, that's my interpretation. I'm not, the, the BOC will vote on that. But those just seem to be the reasonable projections from, from what I've heard.
Once again, I go back to what I said in the beginning. I'd like to see a subject matter expert stand before us and say, hey, here's what we recommend. Here are three different options, or 10, 10 different options. Choose one of these.
If the board of commissioners chose to fund that, there's, there's no issue. I have no clue what that cost would be. But if the board of commissioners decided that they wanted to put some study like that in the budget, that would-
Because if not, we're just arbitrarily making stuff up. I mean, none of us up here, I don't believe any of us are an environmental-type experts or aesthetic buffer experts. You know, we're all just discovering this stuff for the first time.
Sure. The only thing I would say to that is, in this business, sometimes, from an administrative standpoint, from a planning commission standpoint, from a BOC, from a legal standpoint, sometimes you're stuck with, what's the best bad decision I can make? And you're going to have to stomach the best bad decision you can make and move on. And that, there's, there, there is, there is no, not to be argumentative, but listen, I, I could, we could do a study to figure out what type of slip resistance shoes the staff should wear every day and time, right? So we, you could study those things forever, and at some point, you're just going to have to make a decision and go forward and do that, because we, we would bankrupt ourselves. So again, sometimes it's, you're just going to have to put together. Now, obviously, let's take the, the park, the Bowie neighborhood, for example. They've obviously had landscape, landscaper come in, they've identified all those things are. So they didn't haphazardly do that. They put together something that meets their use and the use of the park. So in that case, again, plagiarism, if you have something that meets the requirement, you know it works. Well, they've kind of done some of that work for us. So you can go back and, and alter some of that. I'm not suggesting use all of it. But there, there are things to do. Those, they, they have retained professionals to meet those things. And I think we can take that information and use it, if that was a privilege of the board.
It's unlikely that you'll hire an expert who comes in and says, you don't need to do anything. Whatever expert you hire, to give you an opinion about what you need to do, and then what their cost will be to help you do it.
And then how much shame you're going to suffer when you don't do it.
And how much public outcry you're going to have and emotional, you know, stuff.
So again, sometimes it's what's the best bad decision I can make. Obviously, well-intentioned, you, you're given a set of circumstances, you make the best decision you can with those circumstances, and you move forward with that thing. Sometimes you're just not a total, just, there's not a total waiver for what you're trying to do.
Is there any current regulation with the state of Tennessee around state parks? Like a buffer that the state has for state parks, or that the federal government has for their park, national parks? I mean, are we talking about something that no one really else is worrying about? Buffers around size of land that you're talking about, or are we?
I have no clue.
I'm not aware of any, I mean, a few weeks ago, I hiked the perimeter of Montgomery Bell State Park. And, I mean, I know that I was walking right next to several backyards.
I just think maybe that's food for thought, too, to keep in mind that we are doing something that is unprecedented in other cities around the state.
I know in the discussion, there were a lot of references to the park in Bellevue, which I used to back up to and walk every day, and those are RS-15 lots. And you can see what's on the television in those homes. Does not impede the enjoyment of the walk.
Any additional discussion on item eight? If not, we will move into bonds. Just real quick before we start bonds, do we need to set bonds for the site plans, the halls and stuff in the neighborhood tonight?
The bonds will be set between now and next meeting for any of those. They have not been figured. It does take some time to go through there, see what the infrastructure is, what the requirements would be for the site and anything that we would need. So those, those are not prepared, because not knowing if they were going to be approved or not. But they will be presented to those developers between now and next meeting. And taken care of before pre-construction meetings.
Perfect. So item one, Performance Bond Pepper Tree Subdivision Phase 1, 184,800. So this is just a renewal. Does action need to be taken? No action need to be taken? So just more of a notification. So item two, Performance Bond Pepper Tree Subdivision Phase 3. Good to go? No, no action. Item three, Performance Bond Fernville Condos, Phase 4, 248,000. No action needed. Item four, Performance Bond Windwood Park Subdivision Phase 1, 128,840. No action. Item five, Performance Bond Windwood Park Subdivision Phase 2, 746,700. No action. Item six, Performance Bond Waffle House, 124,300. Is this a new one or just a renewal of their?
This is new.
So we do need a vote to accept, or it's good to go? Good to go, okay. All right, we'll go to reports and discussion information, city planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
Lot of discussion tonight. Thank y'all. That's all I've got tonight.
Sir, city manager, Mr. Collins?
Just a, just a couple items for you tonight. All discussions we had before the meeting started, and then the, the discussion we've had tonight, there's a lot of work that goes on. When I, I say the staff does a lot of work, the planning, the planning commission does a lot of work, the BOC does a lot of work. And we're, we're in this transitional phase in the city to where, over the last 18 months, two years, you get the, the deserved stormwater complaints, stormwater concerns, development concerns, for all of the things that, that go. And we made a commitment a couple of years ago that we're going to start policing that and working through some of those. I can guarantee you a couple of things as we do that. First, we're going to work really hard to make sure we get that right as a staff and as a group. We're pretty committed to that. Second guarantee, I can make you more certain than I can the first, is that we're going to make some mistakes along the way. I get that. I understand that. I'll accept responsibility for that. If we're working and getting through the process, ultimately, whatever those mistakes are, complaints, they sit right here. I've told you guys that before, and I don't mind taking the heat for those. That's my, that's what I'm supposed to do. But we are making an effort to make sure we're, we're doing our best to get those right. We're also doing it across the board. And an example, and the fire department hates me for this right now, but on item number six, the Performance Bond for Waffle House, 124,300. They started doing work last week before they had their, their bond in place. And we knew that. There were some site issues to be done. They got to stop work order, right? The fire department doesn't like me. I hear it every staff meeting for what they're doing. I'm sure the community won't like that. But we're trying to make sure that we follow up with, with those things, and sometimes that's uncomfortable. I get it. Another thing that we've done on that was some of the roads and infrastructure that we're looking to do. We've had existing bonds that take place year after year after year, and the work doesn't get done to, to do all that. We work with everyone to try to get that done, but we have one in the city that hasn't been done for some time. We've been working for six months to get that work scheduled. So far, it hasn't been done. I'm calling a construction, a, a bond tomorrow to get some work done on, on some resurfacing that we're trying to do. So what, what we're trying to do with this work, and I know you guys are as well, I know Mr. Potter is, the staff is, the BOC, what we're trying to do is take the lesson that we've learned from the last 20 years and improve upon those, so that 20 years from now, no one has to ask those same questions of us. That's all we're trying to do. That can be difficult. It can be uncomfortable, but we're trying to get it right. So when, when we get through this and there are growing pains and other things, I'm fully receptive of those. I'm receptive of the complaints. I'm receptive of the blame, if we get to the point where there's a blame. But the effort is to really learn from what was done in the past and take the size staff we have, the size resources we have, and put the effort to make sure that none of you or no one else has to answer those questions when we're done with that. So for what it's worth, I don't, I don't mind taking that. I'm the same person who enjoys an audit. Because for me, an audit is not to learn what we can do better and not be concerned with what we did wrong. So, so I just leave you with that, that as we dig through these things, the effort is to make sure that we're protecting where we are for all the parties involved. And I'll leave you with that tonight. And thank you so much for all the work you've done on the subdivision and all the work we will do, because this is a pretty big undertaking for, for us. So I look forward to getting all that done.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn? Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir. Communication for the planning commission members, Mr. McDonald?
Communication for the planning commission members, Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Sir, Mr. Jenkins? Yes, last year sometime, we had brought up on several occasions the idea of implementing a time limit on approved site plans, so that we didn't have situations where developments were approved, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, and they're just now getting built today. Where are we at with creating that time limit?
We're still in the revision phase of that. Honestly, we have so many that are out there right now that we're just trying to figure out where they are. Once we can identify what those pitfalls have been. Now, there's some time restriction already. Right now, it's three years on a phase. So it's not an unlimited time. So there is something there. But within that, there are some windows for some improvement. We're working to try and identify what those are.
Okay, cool. That's not something that we need to put on like as a discussion like we had tonight?
I can't tell you what's put on agenda or not put on agenda. That's the privilege of the planning commission.
So what are we looking at then? Like, what is the time limit, the turnaround time for something like this? I know you said it's revisional right now. You're working on it. What are we looking at?
I'll be honest with you, I can't answer that.
I know you're busting your butt on everything else, too.
We are completely overwhelmed at this point. So I would love to give you an answer, but I just can't. We're just, we're really stretched.
Thanks for honesty.
Would it be fair to say there have been improvements? Like Highbury Point, there was a pre-approved plan, but the roads didn't meet the restrictions of the widths, the curb. They couldn't do what was approved 15 years ago because our construction standards had increased. So there are some things. There's things in place that are, you know, checks and balances. If it makes you feel any better.
Ms. Senior?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Shulis?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Calley?
Just thanks to the staff for all the work to do. We appreciate your work. Thanks.
Absolutely. Ms. Qualls? Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Thanks for all the work everyone's putting out there, and it is complicated. And don't ever doubt that.
Thank you, guys. I echo. Thank you, guys, for continuing to grind and thank you for the continued discussion and all the work. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.